On to our items of business, first of which we will move up and that is the item B, new business ordinance 1001, the sign ordinance. So, guys, people, minds coming forward and we just received, to give everyone a little bit of background information, we got the final version earlier today, so it was suggested in the agenda session that we tabled this, may or may not take action on it tonight. But it's good to know, it's good to hear from our guys who are going to be having to deal with a lot of sign-related issues as to what exactly this sign ordinance entails.
Excuse me, Chief Custer, can I make a motion to table this?
Certainly we can, and that's fine.
Well, what I would like is, rather than us sitting here for who knows how long, and, I mean, we spent, what, three hours back there in the meeting, and rather than us sitting here and going page by page with all the changes you made, could you resend this out to us and maybe highlight the changes that were made, therefore we don't waste a lot of your time tonight and these folks' time by trying to dissect this?
Absolutely.
And we can take action on it possibly next meeting?
There was roughly five or six changes made through the meeting that we had on that Monday, and the changes reflect each of the individual items, basically, that you go through. And I would like to mention something real quick. I do apologize, there were several revisions, like today, that went out, and this is something that Hal and I have discussed, we've discussed it with several other people. We keep having these issues with our ordinances, between ordinances and resolutions, and I'll use an example as the billboard ordinance. If we were to adopt an ordinance that changed that and said that, you know, that that would require a use on review for all off-premises signs and billboards, well, you still had the moratorium, which was the resolution. So, just an example, if we go to look for this, for the sign ordinance, to make any changes, you still have the resolution here. Or if we go and look at the ordinance, it hasn't been codified in a decent amount of time, and there's three other versions out there besides what I have access to. So, there needs to, from our department, and whether it's us or whether we employ somebody to do that, we really need to take a long, hard look at our ordinance as it pertains to zoning. We work on developing a new zoning standard for the city.
I agree with that.
And when we get through with that, we scrap everything that's been in place in the past.
I can agree with that.
Kenny's absolutely right. There is really an inability to cross-reference the various ordinances and resolutions that apply to the ordinance that have gone over, the ordinance have been used. And in fact, the best way that information is obtained is we ask Mr. Middleton, and hope we should remember something that, you know, happened in 1997 or something like that.
No pressure, Kenny.
Yeah, no pressure. Best way to deal with that is do it at one time, revise it all, scrap everything prior to that time, have one document, one zoning ordinance, and go from there. Rather than, and there was an attempt at some point in time for Intastica Mattia to compile everything and cross-reference, where I can imagine what an absolute nightmare that was, because unless you went through years and years and years of ordinances, no doubt you missed half of them. So, that's a problem that we face, particularly regarding zoning, and that's an issue with regard to other things as well, but particularly with regard to zoning.
Well, again, my motion is on the table, and it's no reflection on your guys'. It's just that, you know, with me just getting this this afternoon, and I've not had time to look at it, I would rather just pass it or table it until the next meeting.
We have, you have a motion to table, we have a second.
I'll say.
Can we have a second? Call please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stuhl.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
That being said, can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, we voted on a moratorium on billboards in that special call meeting that was properly noticed. We voted on a moratorium for billboards. Is that moratorium, is that legislation valid and enforceable at this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's not affected by our vigor at this point, considering the sign ordinance.
Just wanted to confirm.
That cannot speak on that in particular. We, after speaking with other agencies, especially RPA, even after that meeting, our department, we understand the reasons for the moratorium. But at the same time, there has been questions and concerns raised about off-premises signs rated at 25 square feet and billboards. Billboards have always been a use-on-review, which would require our review and then a recommendation to you guys, and then bill review ultimately. I know it's said, but just for thought, because it's in here and it will be highlighted, that our recommendation would be, possibly, that we take all off-premises signs and billboards and keep them as a use-on-review, which is completely up to you guys, but it gives us the ability to view the reasoning, the location for off-premises and billboard, and then also gives you the opportunity to view the same thing, to make that ultimate decision.
I want to be sure I'm understanding what you're saying here. So, you're saying that in this ordinance, you changed the ordinance that was voted on and passed in that special call meeting?
The ordinance had billboards in it already.
Right.
During, which the resolution that is, it's until this time.
Well, that resolution should have been incorporated into this sign ordinance.
Well, I think the moratorium is, was viewed, I think, how you may have mentioned at the time, just the idea behind the moratorium was that it's a temporary.
Exactly, temporary fix.
So, I mean, it's not, it's not just a straight-out, for-all-time prohibition. I mean, that could.
And I can agree with that. However, I think it should be noted in this sign ordinance the way it currently is, and if at some time it gets changed, change the name. That's the way things get lost, you know? Five years from now, no one may remember that we passed a billboard ordinance unless it's reflected in this book.
That's true, that's the cross-reference issue, but at the time that y'all adopt the sign ordinance, y'all need to rescind or revoke or whatever you're going to do with the moratorium. You need to take care of that at the same time, because my recollection was the moratorium was unlimited.
Well, I, there again, I've not had time to read this, so therefore, I mean, I would like to see a copy of this with that resolution for billboards stated in this sign ordinance as voted on by council.
As a prohibition.
As a moratorium, not based on review, whatever the council voted on.
And we're also talking about off-premises signs rated at 25 square feet now.
Yes.
Well, with my recollection, maybe we're talking to, my recollection was it was a moratorium until the council could receive input and consider how to amend or modify the sign ordinance, it wasn't intended on to be necessarily a permanent, now, y'all may vote that, but it was never intended. It was just to stop everything in the tracks, because somebody mentioned the fact that, well, when this issue's kicking around, you may have, you know, 50 people making applications for billboards in the meantime, to try to get in under the gun.
But my point is, is that if someone comes in and they want a copy of the sign ordinance, that resolution is not reflected in the sign ordinance. So, therefore, they're not to know, however they know, if it's not reflected in the book.
Well, what we can do is make sure that when they come in and make that request, that the appropriate city official has on the hand, he gives them a copy of the moratorium. Now, y'all give you the information, here's our current existing ordinance, but also you need to review this resolution, because there's a moratorium in the meantime.
I don't see, I'm sorry, but I don't see the problem with changing a few paragraphs in this book, or adding a page to the back, like copy of the resolution.
It's going to cause y'all to have to adopt something like that. That's the difference.
I think the, again, the difference is, is the moratorium temporary, is it a for-all-time prohibition? If it's intended to be essentially a prohibition moving forward, if for all time, then yeah, we could get rid of whatever it is that's in there that pertains to billboards, but if council at any point envisioned something differently, then we have to have whatever regulations reflected in there. You can't just, you know, rip it out and say it's not there, we're not, we have anything to look at.
The council will view, they can view everything, if say, if a batch program comes in and they want to buy, that's how they're going to sign it's off-premises. We've got, we can't do it. He's looking, well, for certain people, we like to allow that. It just depends, we, they can review it, we can review it, be it the council, like that, see.
You're just going to provide a process this way, and that was brought up, we talked about it even during that meeting, and if you, we'll look at the marquee, we can use that development.
Well, this right here is the exact reason why I made a motion to table it, so.
But again, it seems like we're talking semantics, because what I understood that the council did and intended to do was to have a moratorium or a suspension on the issuance of billboard permits until y'all could consider and fully look at and adopt a sign ordinance, or buy a sign ordinance, but it wasn't, my understanding, to be a permanent resolution that would take effect outlawing billboards period, that was never intended to be bad.
Yeah, but who's to say how long it's going, it would be before we took the issue up again?
The council could set the term ahead. And y'all had the moratoriums in place until then, because the moratorium didn't have any time to develop.
Correct.
Again, I think because this particular sign ordinance, the provisions in this sign ordinance that we're, is in front of us that just got tabled, that hasn't been adopted yet. So, if someone comes to City Hall and says, "I want a copy of your sign ordinance," we're not going to hand them that one. We're going to hand them what currently exists. So, it, what we're talking about, what got tabled, at this moment doesn't necessarily need to reflect the moratorium, I mean, there could be a note or something in there, but I think if we strip out everything about billboards or off-premises signs and just put in, maybe we've got a resolution that provides a moratorium, then we have nothing to work with, you know, there's just, there's nothing there that we're going to look at as a proposed set of regulations for them. So, it's, I can understand where you're coming from, as far as if people come in and they need to know that there's a moratorium. I'm not sure that this document that is a proposal should have all of the other information stripped out and replaced with, there's a moratorium in place.
We're not going to get this in.
Right, until this council actually adopts it.
Which we were going to use at night.
But we were, potentially, for first reading, but it can change, as we've seen with budget and everything else, it can change a whole lot between first and second reading. So, it is tabled, so we've got time to think on it and.
I read the last sentence in the State of Tennessee's billboard standards. This is one that's in our package that I'm fixing to read front, says, "Any billboard does not follow the State of Tennessee jurisdiction or authority shall be prohibited." Now, the one that we were handing tonight under the resolution, that license had been put out in the State of Tennessee billboard standards. So, this is point blank, billboard written, out.
After we had the discussion with the Regional Planning Agency, and using the word prohibition was not, not recommended, and then after looking at it through our staff, is not given owners or the elders an opportunity to even explain the reason why they want to do an off-premises sign rated at 25 square feet, because in the larger picture, we're not just talking about billboards, we could be talking about a marquee that is going to say, "We'll use Jordan Cross." All right, so then, they buy an off-site piece of property, they want to put a marquee that's rated at 25 square feet, as of right now, they cannot do that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We look forward to your email and, sure, we will have many more discussions. I think it's safe to say. All right, so we will move back to old business, and the first item is public hearing on ordinance number 998. Having been properly advertised, we will open this public hearing. If anyone is here who would like to speak on ordinance 998, either in favor or in opposition, this would be your opportunity to do so, if you're coming forward to one of the microphones here at the front of the room, state your name and address for the refer. Seenome member of the public who would like to make comment, so at this time I will ask the.
I can't read what. Gordon, I mean, a lot of them may not have the background work out there, but I want this to be.
Well, certainly you can read on caption, it would be fine.
Ordinance number 998, ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to rezone the property located in the 5300 block of Roosevelt Road from RT1 Residential Townhouse District, RZ1 Zero Lot Line Residential District here on Second Fund.
All right, I'll ask the property owners, if you can come over and just tell the council a little bit about the project. We've heard, of course, it went through planning commission, and we got a little additional information, I think the last meeting, the last council meeting, so if there's anything else you would like to say, please feel free to do so.
Hold up. All my things is that it's presently zoned for 29 townhouses. We're proposing to take it to 20 single-family lots or single cottage townhouses.
All right. Council, do you have any questions?
If you got that time to address the neighbor's account about, you might have wrote, we have not found that who all the owners of it is, but we are willing to do our part and our share of public.
All right. Well, there are questions from council, thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and we will close this public hearing with no comment from the public and no additional questions from council. And we will move to item B, which will be consideration, second and final reading of ordinance number 998, if you'd like.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to rezone the property located in the 5300 block of Roosevelt Road from RT1 Residential Townhouse District to RZ1 Zero Lot Line Residential District here on Second Fund.
Do we have a motion in regards to ordinance 998?
Make a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stuhl.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item C, ordinance 999.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number 989, signed an ordinance to provide revenue from the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, fiscal year July 1st, 2015 to June 30, 2016, for upgrading the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government by changing the revenue from Capital Projects Fund and designating a portion of the fund balance of the State Street A Fund and Capital Projects Fund by changing the expenditures of the State Street A Fund and Capital Projects Fund here on Second Fund.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stuhl.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Item D, resolution number 2496.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of a cornerstone community bank capital outlay number and a principal amount not exceed $775,000 in pursuit of the informal bid process.
Ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did we do this same thing out here several months back?
Thought we did.
Actually, he pulled it.
Oh.
He pulled it.
Okay, I, I thought we did.
So, he pulled it, I think he only talked to someone again at the county office, but it's really just a housekeeping. When they did it back in 2010, it's kind of fell through the frame.
Yes, I read it, so do we have permission for the county office?
Yes, we do, in fact, they do. We do.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Before I vote, I need to disclose that the president of Cornerhead Stone Community Bank is my treasurer for my state house representing this campaign. That being disclosed, I vote yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stuhl.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item B, resolution 2527.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approved an interlocal agreement with the cities of College Dale, Lakeside, Red Bank, Sadi, Daisy, and the towns Lookout Mountain, Signal Mountain, and Walden for the fulfillment of a terrible relations provision.
And this is just a little backstory here, this is something that we, at least in part, approved last time. It's back here before us again, just to have an abundance of caution, to make sure that we have properly voted on actually entering into the interlocal agreement. I think last time, I believe the motion was made to approve funding of $20,000, but I think it's safer to bring it back and just make sure that we've crossed all the t's and dotted all the i's and do. Again, it may not be necessary to do this, but again, have an abundance of caution to make sure we did it right.
Well, I had, since the last meeting, I slept since then, but I didn't remember doing this, preparing the resolution myself, and as Middleton says, that was my very problem, calling it.
I was just thinking about local.
What the council voted on, as I recall last time, was a $20,000, a one-time $20,000 commitment, and not no more. Well, the interlocal agreement that's attached to this, and the council has asked to adopt, talks about, obviously, the contributions of other municipalities, and we know now that Signal Mountain is not going to be approved, we know that Walden is not going to be approved, or perhaps some of the others. But what it also says is on page two, section five, the agreement is automatically to be renewed for one additional year unless a municipality within 120 days prior to that renewal date gets notice to the others to terminate the agreement. So, if we're going to adopt this resolution, adopting this interlocal agreement, which may or may not be effective anyway, because of these municipalities dropping out, we need to have it on somebody's calendar that if we're not going to re-up to the second year, we give them a requisite notice four months in advance. So, that's the reservation that I had.
We did, I believe, we did discuss that to last time, that as it was, as it's worded in the agreement, that it is an automatic renewal, and we'll just have to be vigilant to make sure it doesn't slip by us. If in fact we, if, who knows, maybe the issue is resolved in six months and we don't have to go any further, we can just let that.
So, I just heard the attorney say that what we voted on last time was to, for a one-time $20,000, they will fix it, go into an intergovernment agreement for the duration of the thing.
If we don't, if we don't take other action, if we just, if we sit back and just let it go, then it will auto-renew.
We're only hoping for $4,000.
But we have the ability, 120 days ahead of the renewal date, to say we're not going to go forward. So, really, we can essentially limit it to one year, we just have to make sure that it doesn't slip by us.
But what we voted on last time, it did not?
Well, and that's the, again, that's the crux of the issue, I think, is.
I mean, they're sending us, we're being asked to vote on an ordinance written by another state.
Well, we're, no, well, basically that, what we're really being asked to do is vote on this interlocal agreement that has these provisions, and they want everybody to sign off on the same agreement, not somebody just to say, like, East Ridge is counting in for 20 and Red Bank counting in for 20 and back down. They want us to sign the interlocal agreement, and they're prepared. And one way to resolve the notice issue, you know, we can approve it, then give them a notice tomorrow that we're not going to re-up for the next second year, if that's the case, and then perhaps come back and check your mind later on. But College Dale's the one that's pressing us to everybody in and into the same agreement.
And I talked to the people in College Dale yesterday, and also to Mayor John, shoot, City of Red Bank, yesterday, John Roberts, thank you, as well yesterday, and he is extremely concerned about this potential litigation coming up, so, as is College Dale. Again, I would just like to reiterate, I think we should be proactive rather than reactive. I think that's something the same order, not stated last.
Make a motion, Jennifer.
I'll say.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments or questions?
One thing I've got, like I said the last time, if we're limited, it's $25, it's $20,000, no more.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to expand on the repercussions of this type of budget?
Sure, sure.
I don't want the citizens to think that we're just going out here spending, you know, committing $20,000 willingly.
The, frankly, there's no telling how many versions of this bill are going to be floating around out there. There could be several different ones. The one that we have been made aware of would potentially take between half a billion and a billion dollars out of our pocket annually in state shared sales tax. That's sales tax that the state returns to the cities, it's divided up and sent back to the cities. The version that we have seen or have heard about could potentially, again, take. uh could, could potentially, again, take, take that much money from us. And, you know, could we absorb that kind of blow? Really hard to say without doing something significant to, to offset it. And when I say significant, cut services, raise taxes. And, and I don't think any of us want to be in that position. And I've heard other municipalities, uh, other, other officials say, look, if this goes through, I'll tell you now, we don't have much we can cut. Taxes are going to go up in our city. It will run out. Where bones will go out. There, there is another version that's, that's probably going to be floated out there too. And, and Patsy Hazelwood, who represents Red Bank and Saudi Daisy and Lookout Valley and, and myself are in constant communication with Mayor Coffager over these and, and trying to, trying to negotiate. It's a, you know, really the question is, did we spend twenty thousand to try to, to try to hit this off? Or do we sit back and really take no action? Be reactive, as, as House Mayor mentioned. We saved twenty thousand dollars, but it's the old saying of, any wise, pound foolish. You know, we, we can stand to lose a whole lot of money from now on.
There's a resolution pointing out.
In this resolution, I find the math is already wrong. I've seen an application of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And back here, an application of funds added up to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
See.
Number two and number ten. Back there, I think eight thousand, I'll sell it. Forty thousand dollars, uh, ordinary expenses, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And over here, it's saying the maximum is going to be a hundred and twenty-four thousand.